I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, October 24, 2023, in the Abington Middle High School Library. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, if anybody would like to address the committee, I just ask you to go to the microphone, please state your name and address for the records.
Mike McDonald, three Pinecrest Road. And I'm following up on, was it not at the last meeting, but I'm following up on where the sex education that was approved by DESI, where that stands, and I'm really calling on, you know, you guys to, you know, take courage and reject this, or at least allow for an opt-in. An opt-in, not an opt-out. It teaches, you know, I've read through it, it teaches, you know, from as early as eight, but with the, you know, possibility of kindergarten through 12, and gender-affirming, you know, you know, it's sponsored by Planned Parenthood. There's a host of things that are not appropriate at age level for young kids that I think really needs to be rejected, but if it's not, I think it's fair to say an opt-in on sex ed versus an opt-out should be the answer. If, you know, if parents want to opt-in and have their young children taught this way, then I think that so be it. But that's my suggestion, but I want to know here from you where that stands, because it's really troubles.
So I can answer part of the question. I don't know exactly where it stands in terms of being implemented in our schools yet. I'll ask Mr. Schaefer in a minute if he can weigh in on that, but I can tell you that I did do some research into it, and this board does not have the ability to undermine what the state decides are the state goals and standards for being taught. City and town school departments develop the lessons, support materials, and programming based on the approved frameworks of DESI. So what DESI approves is what we build a framework around teaching. I will defer to Mr. Schaefer regarding the opt-in. I don't even know if that's a school committee decision or how that works, and where we may stand in terms of when it'll be, when the new standards will be implemented in our schools.
So it was just recently adopted by the Department of Education through the Board of Education, which is the democratic process Massachusetts puts in place to decide these things. They don't, Massachusetts, as the chair said, does not give committees the latitude to make that a part of their deliberation. So what we'll do is we will build a curriculum based on frameworks and standards that DESI has published. That hasn't been done yet, that takes time, doesn't matter what subject area it was or is, it takes time to do that. So that will, that will take place in the coming months, hopefully for more information on that in next year or at some point in future.
There's got to be a way to...
In terms of opt-in or opt-out, that's part of the regulation on this, is that there's an opt-out for families, that they don't have to have their children participate in that, and they just, we send a letter home asking people so that they have noticed.
Right, but that's, that's involved sometimes in translation, right? So sometimes people don't get it, and I, and I think it's more, it's more, it's better for parents to opt-in when they, when they, when they're aware of this, so, you know, some parents may not be aware, may not be aware that their third grader is going to be taught gender-affirming, you know, things, or sexual production, you know, sexuality, sexualizing young children, so...
So the letter that goes home, so there's an extra layer of information that goes home to families, so they, so they know that they have the opportunity to opt out.
And just going back to that, what you were talking about, about you have to, you have to accept everything that DESI comes your way, no matter, no matter what.
We, the Department of Education, through the Board of Education, votes the framework and the standards, and then school systems in Massachusetts build the curriculum based on that framework and those standards.
So we will build curriculum to meet the standards that DESI has passed down. I won't personally, but the schools...
And then from that curriculum comes the lesson plans, the assessments, and all those things.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know, I mean, there's got to be a way, and there's got to be a way to push back, you know, there has to be a way to push back our children, you know, the numbers show the depression, anxiety, suicide risk are massive, right? You know, it's massive in certain populations, and we, as, you as a school board have a huge responsibility, you know, to protect the, our children and keep their, you know, innocence.
Mr. McDonald, our responsibility is to uphold the law, the standards passed down by the Mass Department of Education.
I don't think, I think...
I appreciate, I respect your opinion, but it's not the fact.
Your responsibility is to protect the children.
Okay, so no, yes, you're right, nobody is coming in here to physically harm any children.
Well, but, but, but it is...
That's your opinion, Mr. McDonald, that is your opinion, that is your opinion.
No, it's the opinion, you can look at human health, and HHS put out a recent study, right? This is under the Biden administration. It shows a big increase in suicide, in anxiety, drug use, all this, all this stuff.
Of what?
Of transgender, of gender ideology.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not my view, it's, it's, so what I'm saying is that this school committee needs to really look at this and push back.
We will look at it.
And push back. Your job is not to be just a desk...
Mr. McDonald, I'm speaking now. We will look at it as far as what standard we can, which is what I explained to you already. The school department will put together an agenda to teach that. As they need our input, we will help them with that input. That's the school committee's responsibility in terms of teaching standards. I understand different opinions, that's just the fact. That's the law, it's Massachusetts law, Chapter 71, Section 37, for anybody that wants to look it up.
Right, and I'm giving you the facts that came from HHS.
That suicide is higher in those groups?
Yeah.
I firmly believe that, but I don't understand what that has to do with anything about being taught.
But, but, but it has to do with that, with that teaching, that we're confusing our children to say that...
We can agree to disagree on that.
All right, I mean, I think, I think we both, you know, love, you know, care for the kids, and I'm not questioning that.
That's correct. I know you're not.
I'm not. I'm saying that it's scary to a lot of people, and I think, I think an opt-in, I think an opt-in option would be better for the majority to have an opt-in, that if you, if you feel this way, that this is what you think is correct, right? If you think this is the teaching that you want, then parents should opt-in versus...
We don't have opt-ins for any other programs. There are no opt-ins for any other programs in the department.
Right, but this is something a lot, this is a lot different than just...
Your opinion. It's a health curriculum, just like an English curriculum, just like a math curriculum, just like a science curriculum. This is the health curriculum. They have an opt-out, which, there's no English opt-out, I don't think, but this actually provides an opt-out for those parents. And I'm sure it'll be publicized enough where people will know if they want to opt-out, they can, and if they don't, they don't. And if they find out something happens, they're free to reach out to their school, the superintendent, the principal, Dr. Basta, who is in charge of the curriculum, anybody in those standards who want to help. What I'm just trying to tell you is what we're allowed to do here, and I don't even know if we're allowed to put an opt-in, I will tell you I don't favor an opt-in, because I don't favor an opt-in to anything, but I don't even know if that matters, especially if it's written where the standard is written to be an opt-out. But for this point of view, we are not allowed to alter the standards. We are, what our school department will do is develop standards to help teach to that curriculum.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the reading and approval of records from September 26, 2023. When anybody gets a chance, I'd like to, I look for a motion to approve in a second.
Make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I failed to mention when we started, Dr. Michelle is feeling under the weather tonight, so that's why she's not here tonight for anybody that was wondering. So moving on to some unfinished business, which came about at the very end of our last school committee meeting, we received the resolutions for the MASC committee, that's going, the meeting will take place the second week of November. The first part of that is appointing a voting delegate, I just want to let everybody know that I've appointed Melanie to be the Abington School Committee's voting delegate on November 8th for the resolutions, and Melanie, what is, we'll vote on these right now, and whatever we vote, that's what you'll vote for Abington, okay? So everybody has the, we got them last month at the end, and we should have them now. I'm not going to read the whole thing, and we've all had them, I'll read the summary, and I'll read the very summary at the end, and then open for discussion on any resolution that we want to talk about, just to let everybody know there are eight of them, so as we get going. So the first one is full stable funding for Metco, which is sponsored by the Arlington School Committee. So it sums up, "It therefore be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the governor and the legislature to create a stable funding structure to support Metco," which is, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, "the Metropolitan Council for Educational Opportunity and its partner districts that fully funds the support provided by Metco and the cost of providing services delivered by Metco's partner districts." There is a lot of wording in between, I just, we all have it, so I don't want to read to everybody. So open for any discussion on this, or if anybody would like to make a motion to, motion would be to approve it, if we're going to make a motion to and do anything.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Resolution two, "Regarding Investigations and Recommendations for Transportation Bidding Procedures Sponsored by the Southeastern Vocational Technical School Committee. Be it resolved that the Mass Association of School Committees prevail upon the office of the state auditor to investigate the bidding practices of school transportation providers and to present such findings and recommendations as may be necessary to contain costs and make more efficient transportation services available for public schools." I wish Dr. Michelle was here to opine on this one, but I don't, I mean, I'll just speak to this one, having an order to look at and recommend things to me doesn't seem like a bad idea or anything, so I'll make a motion to approve this one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution three, "Regional Transportation," which doesn't affect us directly, "sponsored by the Hampton-Wilbraham Regional School Committee. Be it resolved that in such case where a pupil resides greater than one and one-half mile from the school of attendance measured by a commonly traveled route, and the Commonwealth reimbursement does not fully cover the amounts expended for such transportation, the regional school district may allow pupils to opt out of such transportation or may charge a fee that in aggregate may not exceed the differential between the amounts expended for furnishing transportation and the Commonwealth reimbursement. Be it further resolved that MASC encourage the legislature to modify Mass General Law Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 16C, with the aforementioned proposed language, to provide regional districts the ability, if so desired, to charge a transportation fee that in aggregate cannot exceed the differential between..." I didn't get the type of...
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, "between what the Commonwealth reimbursement and the regional school district transportation expense for any people that resides greater than one and one-half mile from the school of attendance measured by a commonly traveled route. Pupils may opt out of transportation and not be subject to a transportation fee." Mr. Schaefer, I failed to mention when I started this, if you could provide any light or guidance or translation into English of what some of these mean, it would be appreciated before we talk about it.
So far, you're crushing it.
I'm reading it. Does this transportation at all affect our transportation costs?
It's about the reimbursement that regional school systems were promised for transportation, they regionalized.
Okay.
And they had never received, so they're trying to push for a better reimbursement for the state.
So this is different, so your transportation's for, like, for, yeah, for...
This is for...
For this.
Yep, for regional. That's such for, for tech is regional, so they would get better reimbursement.
So this does actually, we can have a dog, you know, okay.
Well, when you said, when you're talking about pass, I meant, but we have a couple of schools, but...
Does it affect our budget?
Do go there.
No, it don't affect our budget, part of our system.
Well, because I know every year we do vote.
I would recommend that this would be a good thing for the state to do, because it would help with that, with the funding, for their, in some systems, you know, that's, this is a part of Massachusetts where the municipalities are fairly close to each other, in the western part of the state where they're traveling great distances too, it's, you know, crushing.
I wonder if, what the dollar amount would be to a family, because if I'm concerned that in the western part of the state or in more rural areas, could this be a thousand-dollar charge that was scribbling to a family and now accounts?
So I'm not aware that they're actually charging a fee, I think that the state promises to be, so it's a great expense to the regionals, so this improves the reimbursement they get from the state for the transportation they provide to their students.
So it could actually limit a fee that a family pays, right?
So I thought this, I thought what we were voting on here was that schools could charge a fee to the pupil for the differential between what the state gives them and what the actual cost is, but I could have been completely wrong.
I actually read it in the beginning.
I thought this was going to be like, yeah, a family cost.
It's part of, yeah, that would be bad.
Which I understand, but I would like to see a cap of some sort, because I do think, especially in a rural area...
You can also, as a committee, cast on this, and then when you have further discussion, that committee will be comfortable with that, then Melanie, when you have the resolution, with the resolution committee, ask for further questions, given your information, list down deliberation, you can decide for this committee, again, this is not something either way that impacts the Abington Public Schools.
Abington directly, okay. That might not be a bad, does anybody have any other opinion on it?
To pass over this one?
To pass over this one, and Melanie, if you find out, like, there is some kind of cap if somebody asks, and if it's, I will leave it to your judgment, you're a representative there, that it be reasonable, then feel free to vote however you see fit for Abington. Does anybody, if anyone would like to make a motion to pass it, we can, if not, let's pass over.
I'll make a motion to pass.
There's no motion to pass, just pass over, I think.
Then pass over, go.
All right, so we'll skip that one. Resolution four, "Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion," submitted by Division 10, amended by the Resolutions Committee. So basically, it sums up that MASC recommends that all districts adopt the position of DEI coordinator to work towards an anti-racist school system.
So I just have a question, I don't know if Peter, you know, the answer to this, are they recommending that everybody has to hire a whole new FTE, or that this responsibility can be given, because I have, I'm in favor of it, but like, are they gonna help fund that, like, how?
No, and there's three, and there's 351 different municipalities in Massachusetts, and if everybody were hiring DEI coordinators, I mean, there wouldn't be, you know, just the people with the qualifications at all, I mean, couldn't pull it off. That's why the word "recommend" is important here. There are other ways to do this, to consult, so you don't add a full-time equivalency. I share your concern.
So the fact that it says "recommend," does that mean if we pass this, there, it just gives them the authority to recommend, it does not give them the authority to mandate?
Correct.
I'm okay with that.
I am too, with that caveat, so...
I waffled on this one, I won't let, I don't know.
The idea of it, like, I like the idea of it, but yeah, I mean, we don't know...
I'd like to start to come to this thing pretty naturally, instead of being told, you know.
Do you know of any districts that have DEI coordinators, City does, right?
Some of the larger systems, yeah.
And probably some better funded systems.
Right, I just hate to see another position get cut, right.
Recommendations.
So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to come to you with a budget proposal in the coming months, and you're probably going to see, you know, maybe a special education teacher, program for high school, English learner supports, you know, just, our English learners need that support, our special education students, program at the high school, and we have been doing a consult model around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I don't, couldn't, I wouldn't recommend hiring a full-time person.
I am with you, Heidi, I waffled on this one quite a bit, because I don't want to see it elongated, I do like that it says "recommended," but one thing that I like about Abington, and I think it's probably felt in this position, at least statewide, is people rise to this position naturally, so you have people who are passionate about DEI, and it gives them a very rewarding component of their job, to be someone who reaches out or is part of a club, or just embraces culture at each of the schools, and I think that's important to keep for our staff within our district, as opposed to having just one set person that is telling someone what to do. People naturally want to do it.
So I'm, I agree, like, I agree with the idea of it, but I would not support it here over hiring a specialized teacher. So if that's the case, I'm saying how could I support the school committee's recommending it?
If we're not going to...
If I'm not, yeah, if I wouldn't ask Peter to do it. So that's where I think I stand on it.
And I don't think anybody, from what I've heard, I don't want to put anything out there that you don't feel comfortable with, but nobody is saying that this isn't a good thing.
Right, correct. The idea of it is definitely a good thing, but unless they're going, unless the state is going to give us the funding for it, then, they give us the funding for it, then yes, so...
I still think there's a lot of things that we need that I would want them to give us the funding for first.
I do think that a recommendation that could open the door for that, like, this is maybe just getting a foot in the door to get out there that, you know, maybe we feel like we don't need it here, but there are schools where it desperately needed, so I don't know, for me, the fact that it says "recommended," it's not mandated yet, I like the message of it, and again, like I said, it could lead to maybe funding.
Funding later on, say, if you want to recommend this, that we need the funding for it, okay.
That's where I am on that.
Okay.
I get everyone else, you know, see both sides.
No, that makes sense too. I hadn't thought about it that way.
No, and I like, I love that viewpoint, I think maybe I can sit here feeling comfortable in the fact that we're in a district where there are people who have done some pretty tremendous work in this area on behalf of our students. I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing the districts that maybe perhaps aren't. It's just when we're starting to make recommendations, again, for things that are unfunded, or potentially, I would also hate to put a recommendation forward that could potentially be used against a district that financially cannot afford to put money into that kind of position.
Yeah, MASC doesn't have that power, though. If it's a DESI, it'd be different, I feel like I could, feel like DESI could potentially shift that, but MASC doesn't have the power to...
Good one.
...to force the district to hire anybody.
And I just, I would just like to put it out if I could, that, again, we, I think, you know, we're using a very qualified consultant.
Yep.
Rather than a full-time equivalency, so... I don't know.
And I like the thought, I just, I'm not thrilled with the wording.
I don't know that I feel comfortable with the wording. The word "recommends" is, it's there, I just hope that they wouldn't take that word and use it in different ways.
Having sat in that voting seat, the thing that I'm very cognizant of right now is, as discussions happen on the floor, things change by the minute.
Yeah.
And what worries me is how the amended language of this one could potentially conceivably come out to something starkly different than what it's written here, and that's just something that is resonating with me right now.
Does anyone want to make a motion either way?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. All in favor of approving it as it's written?
Aye.
Opposed?
I vote aye.
All right, so that one's a no, Melanie.
And I will keep everyone apprised on the language, because I did see in last year's resolutions, it was like an amended, and amended, and amended, so I'll keep everyone apprised of the language.
I sent a fair few texts, I'm not entirely sure where we're at at this one right now, so...
All right, so Resolution five, "Mass School Building Authority," submitted by the Wachusett Regional School Committee. I'm going to hit on one paragraph in here, so "The MSBA is limited in funding, as stated by Mass General Law, to $800 million plus either the rate of growth in the dedicated sales tax revenue amount is defined in subsection of 35BB of Chapter 10 or 4.5%." So, "And the MSBA has declared a pause on their accelerated repair program and limits on their core projects due to rising costs and inflation, and the need to stay within this annual cap as referenced by their memo on 101922." So it's resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Mass Legislature to amend Mass General Law, Chapter 70B, Section 7, by removing the $800 million cap, and resolved that the Mass Association of School Committees calls upon the MSBA to reinstate the accelerated repair program for 2024 applications, and further resolved that MASC calls upon the Mass Legislature to allow public preschools to be included in the accelerated repair program and core program.
I'll make a motion to, for this resolution.
I'll make, I'll second that motion as well, since we already benefited. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution six, "School Bus Stop Armed Surveillance Act and Enforcement and Penalties," submitted by Peabody, Peabody, sorry, Peabody and Marlboro School Committees. Sorry. Resolve, "The Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the legislature to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of a motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop for a school bus when required to do so by law. Further resolve, the MASC, the MASC calls on the legislature to enact legislation raising the fine for passing a stopped school bus to a significant schedule of fines as penalty, whether witnessed by a police officer or recorded by a digital video detection monitoring system." Rationale, "The significant safety concerns present when a vehicle passes a stopped school bus embarking," everybody knows that. "Requiring a police officer to witness the violation prevents appropriate law enforcement action from taking place, especially for repeat offenders. Allowing the installation and utilization of a digital video detection monitoring system on school buses will allow for appropriate law enforcement action, provide for monitoring and data pertinent to the safety concern, and serve as a deterrent to drivers who are contributing to the safety issue. Protecting the safety of our students is a paramount concern."
I think, in general, I like the idea, like, we know this is a problem, but I would need a lot more information about how that data is being captured, how it's being saved, how it's being disseminated, I have privacy concerns over this, not the idea itself, but the technological aspect of it, I would need more information.
I can tell you, I definitely am not in favor of our school committee telling the Mass Legislature how to have laws for fines.
Yep.
Like, that's just not our, in my opinion, that's just not our scope, like, if the monitoring, I actually was, when I first read this to myself, I was against the monitoring, but then I equated it to cameras on stoplights, which are now there too, so the monitoring part of it, although I don't know who pays for the monitoring to be installed either, as long as that's not the Abington Public Schools so much, but I definitely am not in favor of us, of the part of it where we would, so if it's as is, I would say no, if it's amended to remove any comment on the penalty for it, then I could probably be talked into it, but that's kind of where I came down on it. Anyone else?
For a recommendation?
Yes, you have it.
I don't, I don't know that it would necessarily have legs because of the privacy issues that Julie brought up regardless. We all want people to stop when, you know, when buses open their arm, but I don't know that this, I don't think, I don't think this has legs anyway, I don't think this is going to go anywhere. So my recommendation would be that it wouldn't matter if you passed it or not, so I'm just being honest.
No, I understand, I wish there were, I mean, some of that...
Is it worth passing over this one?
Yeah, it's not going to pass over.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have the same concerns as Julie. And I, for the past, today's Tuesday, yesterday and today, coming down Route 18, there's a small bus that stops on one side of the street, and everyone blows right by it, so I witness it every single day, and it is infuriating. But, again, how the information is, what they use it for, how it's disseminated, who's responsible, like, is there like a law enforcement person that's going to be put in charge of checking every single school bus camera, is it going to be on the bus driver, because nothing else, the bus drivers, but what if they happen to know, what are the, you know, if they're not trained properly, or they play, you know, don't report everyone, but report some, yeah, I just, there's not enough information here for me to-
I just don't know that MASC has the likes to-
They don't, I'm sure they don't, yeah, I just don't like the idea of even introducing a school committee submitting something to the legislature in terms of increasing fines, like, so that's not-
We're tasked with policy-
Yeah, yeah, yes, exactly, so. I don't know, does anybody, do you want to vote on it, or do you just want to pass it over?
I would say no.
Okay, we'll pass over, that's fine, yep, that works. So Resolution 7, almost done guys, related to MCAS, submitted by the Framingham School Committee. So, this, the MASC urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legitimate stakeholders. MASC urges the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation to investigate the extent of biases pertaining to the MCAS testing, and make these results public. The MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately, and that MASC urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS test. As you can see throughout, it gives its examples for it. The goal of public education is to teach students how to be critical thinkers, engage citizens, and lifelong learners. Use of MCAS has restricted curriculum and narrowed the focus of education in our public schools. Use of MCAS has impacted student emotional well-being, and MCAS testing has unjustly targeted communities with underfunded public schools for state takeovers that have failed. And MCAS testing as a high school graduation requirement has prevented or delayed countless students from earning a diploma, either interrupting or derailing education or career plans. That's part of their rationale for this resolution.
So I am okay with first, the second, and the fourth bullet. What's getting me is the third bullet. Like, I know, I think it's Massachusetts teachers unions, I might be wrong on that, have, are pushing for a ballot measure that says it won't be a graduation requirement, which I'm okay with that, but I am not, I, trust me, I do not think the MCAS is a solution, and I'm all in favor of looking at a better, less biased, you know, test, but I'm concerned about this moratorium, because it could be years before we come up with another version of the test, and then we have nothing that is, that we can use that's measurable about the progress that our kids are making. That's my concern, I could be persuaded the other way, if someone can convince me, we have other data stats to compare our students to the rest of the state, just to track our progress, but, and if this third one could be that it's no longer graduation requirement, I would be totally on board with it, but I have concerns about a moratorium, only because I think that's just going to leave a black hole, you know?
I agree with a lot of the things, so, to my, as well, my biggest issue with the MCAS is the graduation requirement that it pertains.
Agreed.
I believe it puts too much on there, where I feel our teachers are qualified enough to determine if somebody is qualified to earn a diploma or not. That's me personally, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, as a school committee, how we stand on it, so-
I agree with that.
That's me personally, so, to your point right now, I don't, so, I don't know, a lot of, a lot of everything else, it's enough people have looked into it, where I take it as fact, but I, I don't hate the MCAS for its, for itself, it's more, it's more that, really, that aspect of, like, I think it's going to provide us a lot of information tonight, and what can help us improve in areas that can improve, but to say there aren't, like, there's, I know the whole teaching to the test, it does, I don't know how, it did happen, I don't know if it still does, and it's, I don't blame anybody for it. The idea is, if you're trying to get these kids to graduate, like, that's part of the vision of the graduate, that they have to do this, so that's kind of where I come, so, I mean, I think, to the extent, right, how much, how much, how much power does MASC have to tell Massachusetts not to-
Right.
-test it anyway, and to rip that, to take that away, as long as they're going to keep the requirement, then you have to let them test it, so. But I, for me personally, to send the message, at least, and that's why it's, I'd like to hear from others too, because it's more of a personal thing right now, I would vote in favor of this.
I would say that for any kid, if I support it, get rid of the MCAS, I think we all did okay without it. I'm glad that I didn't have to take it, and I think I did fine, and it's, for me personally, it's stifling, and I wish that we didn't have to do it. If we just eliminate the graduation requirement, the only thing, the only reason that kids take it seriously is because it counts for something, so if it doesn't count for anything, they're not going to try that hard.
But were there tests, and I don't know, because I grew up in Rhode Island, so, were there standardized tests, because I took them, that didn't have graduation requirement, there was none around for that, but nobody blew it off? Like, we took them, and we, but we, we knew it didn't have anything to do with requirements, I don't know, like, I defer to, maybe we didn't take them in high school, right, maybe that was part of it, maybe we took it-
There was no standardized tests in Massachusetts in high school.
So maybe we didn't take them in high school, maybe that was the thing, so, but-
California achievement test.
Yes, that's what I took, California test of basic skills, CTBS. So, that's, I mean, I do get that. Danielle too, I mean, I guess my hope would be, if it's, try to get a happy medium somewhere eventually with it, so, I didn't think about that part of it, so. Open to anything else.
Do you want to go first, or do you want, because I got it?
Sure, so I, Julie, you said it perfectly, that's exactly where I am, I'm in favor of this, with the exception of the moratorium. I like data, and I understand there are students for which the MCAS provides a great way to say I did well, and accolades for myself, and there are students who discriples them. I think students right now have the opt-out until high school, I think they have the opt-out of it, they don't have to take it, so students who maybe have reasons where they don't want to take the test can opt out. I would like some sort of comparability, both so that we can compare ourselves year over year, but more specifically so we can identify a gap in a particular area where maybe a whole grade is falling behind because something happened that year. I think that is valuable in enriching the curriculum for the student.
Which we've seen, right, in some of the-
Yeah, grades, yeah.
We definitely had data-informed conversations in this room, at this table, based on what we have. My number one issue is that these are four bullet points that don't actually work well together, so I'm having a hard time going all up or down on this one. I would very much like to know who we're, who they are defining as legitimate stakeholders, because to me, that's really good buzz language for, I fill in the blank, I'm not entirely sure. And when we're talking about a moratorium on one thing, while developing an alternative potential look-alike, and who are we looking at for doing that, there's a lot here that I am questioning. So I will say, I went to the meeting, I wasn't a delegate, you know, I went to the meeting last year with you, and I sat at a roundtable panel discussion with the Framingham administration, and I think I have an idea where this is coming from. Framingham has a giant Brazilian population in their town, and they have actually done, I was telling my husband about it, he went to Framingham for our nephew's hockey game, they have done a phenomenal job, I think, of coming up with processes to bring those families into the fold and to support them. I'm guessing, though, that that might be where this is coming from, since this is submitted by the Framingham School Committee.
Gotcha.
If they talk about it being biased, I mean, they have tons of non-English language learners, so I think that it comes from the right place, so, that's just my guess as to where it probably comes from, and Framingham is their changing population, and I get that.
I am not a fan of, MCAS haven't been since day one.
Yeah.
The only thing that I can, but I am a fan of data, so that's my only, like, I just don't love the way this is written, because I don't feel like it, there's too many moving parts to this that are up in the act.
So, MCAS needs to improve.
Yes.
But it's more, it is overall more good than that, in my opinion, it's just my opinion. Helps us look at areas for us to improve, and that's what we want to be about, is improvement effort. So I like all of this, except for the piece where it says that there would be a moratorium until, you know, the perfect, you know, don't let, don't let, you can't let perfect be the enemy good. So until, you can improve it without having a moratorium. So that's my, that would be my hangup with this.
What's the likelihood that this is going to get amended in six different directions?
I was going to say, I mean, so, I'd like, I'd feel comfortable making a motion and to, and have that discussion, Melanie.
I could propose an amendment.
Yeah, yeah, propose amendment, I mean, replace it with, remove it as a graduation requirement, right? I think we're all kind of said that that's our, that's one of the big ones, I don't want to speak for Danielle.
And I mean, well, and I think to Danielle's point too, though, if, we do know that there is a scholarship opportunity that is directly linked to MCAS performance, so for the students who still are looking for a reason to do well on it, you know, that there is a definite tie to that.
That's true.
Is there any funding components that could be tied to our performance? So let's say our performance declines significantly, is there any way to show Massachusetts, we need help, look at our scores, give me money?
So that it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not really, it's not tied directly to your scores?
Okay.
So how would we vote on this? Would we vote-
I'm going to make a-
No, she makes an amendment, or yes, but only if Melanie offers up an amendment? How does that, would we vote on that?
I mean, I guess, I'm going to say something, I mean, I don't know, like, I would kind of tell Melanie, right, instead of just, like, I don't know, like, that's where it gets tough, having to make motions to stop and things like that, like-
Well, we just, I think we're all on the same page, as far as what we feel for the most part, so if we were to pass with the idea that based on what this potential amendment is, we're just putting our voting trust in the fact that Melanie understands essentially-
Yeah, okay.
So as proposed with no amendment, our answer, our vote would be no?
Correct.
Like, maybe we have a vote on what it would be as, as written, and then what it would be as amended.
Will we prefer? Sure. So, you can do that, right?
You can do it.
Yeah, alright, so, I'll look for a motion to approve, I'll make the motion to approve, just to get over, Resolution 7, as it's written.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that fails.
Okay.
So, I'm going to guess, I'm going to try to word this, if you guys want to change it, tell me. So, Resolution 7 with bullet three taken away, which reads that MASC urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately. If that's removed from this, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain on that one.
Okay.
I mean, I guess aye, as long as it's not replaced with something else we don't like, I guess is my guess.
That's why I'm abstaining.
That's fine, I mean, we put our trust in you on that, you know what I mean? And we're one out of how many, so-
Yes.
I say aye, yes. Removing bullet three from what's written, basically. You know?
No, I'm waiting, but opposed.
What's up?
Can I do opposed?
Yeah, who's in, oh, so, all in favor, are you?
Aye.
In favor of taking out that bullet, yes, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes three to one. So that would be the way to go, and I think we all, so, and put our faith in you, hopefully the last one here should be pretty quick, because I think it's just something we're already kind of doing.
Sorry, Chris, can I just?
Yeah.
Do we also want to vote on adding the graduation requirement comment? Or no? Do you want me to propose that as an amendment to add a graduation requirement that there is a graduation requirement?
To remove the graduation requirement? And what do you, somebody else, I already made two of them, so, I'll defer to anybody else to make a motion if they want on that.
I mean, I'll make a motion too.
Where it adds removing the graduation requirement? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That's fine. Alright, I think we're good, alright, so. Resolution 8, Safe Storage of Firearms, submitted once again by the Framingham School Committee. In summary, the MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians that explains the importance of secure firearm storage to protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecured firearms and illegal obligations consistent with Massachusetts Safe Storage Law. Maybe kind of already did that, right?
We, we did a lot of work with the Be Safe Program.
Okay. So, unless anybody wants to discuss this one, does anybody want to discuss this resolution further?
I personally was conflicted on this resolution as well, not that I don't feel there is value, it's, I feel similarly with the DEI, that I don't feel this is within the school committee's purview to be determining what happens with firearms. I support when community members come in and ask the school district to support them in an initiative that's an important, of importance to the community, but I don't know that it's the schools, I feel personally that this is not the schools' purview to be deciding how people keep their firearms. Not to say I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of the legislature.
I understand.
I'm kind of ambivalent about it, like, I'm in support of it, and no offense to Peter about looking in care of the superintendent, that's to say about how they store their firearms, so I don't know that it's, you know, useful, but it can't hurt, I guess is where I-
Do you want me to throw in?
Sure.
A little bit? So, I agree with you, there are a lot of people that don't care, but there are a lot of people that do care, and having a reminder that, you know, I should be more responsible, did I lock that thing up or not, whether it comes from, you know, me or somebody else, just public service announcements that, hey, you ought to lock that up, in a way that nobody can get to it, isn't a bad thing. But, yeah, you're right, nobody cares for it. Not disagreeing with it.
I think it's a strong community service message, strong PSA for sure, I would love to see way more safety. I'm just trying to get, we're throwing this in between math and English, or, you know, is this like an after-hours community fair, you know what I mean? It's-
So we'll do this again, you know, and send out the PSA from the Abington Public Schools, and if you're a, you're a gun proponent or gun opponent, this is something that you're for, because this just locks up guns, it doesn't tell you you can't have them, or you can't have them, it just says you ought to keep them safe. If you're a proponent, you want people to keep their guns safe, and if you're an opponent, you still want people to keep their guns safe. So, it should be apolitical.
Great use of the word share. Policy and budget. I keep coming back to those two, two things, policy and budget.
Is there any other discussion on the resolution? I will make a motion to approve the resolution as it's written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that fails. Alright, I'm done talking. Thank you, everybody, appreciate you staying with us through all of that. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vasta. Go right ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, I mean, you kind of gave me an intro already, but it wasn't the kind of intro I was hoping for.
Hope we get it wrong.
Yay, MCAS.
It's what we have, and so we want to share how we did last year. So, good evening, thanks for having us back every fall to talk about MCAS. Along with myself, we have, yeah, there you are, we have Ms. Doherty, we have Ms. Corbett, and Dr. Goncalves. So, we will, you'll see, that overall, through our, tonight's presentation, our students did well, we have a few areas to continue to work on as a district to support all students. It's also important to note that this is a month earlier than our typical presentation, so, right now, compared to last year when we did this at the end of November, right now, our teachers are doing- right now, our teachers are, um, doing item analysis and disaggregating the data and looking at, uh, subgroups and individual students. So that work is happening right now, so, um, some, feel free to ask as many questions as you want. There are some questions we may not be prepared to answer yet, because that, um, data analysis is still ongoing. Any questions so far? Nope, great. So just to remind everyone, um, over the last few years, we did have, obviously, school interruptions, but also MCAS interruptions. So, 2020, there were no MCAS tests, 2021, in grades three through eight, there were, there was half of an MCAS administration. And, um, since then, we've had the full test administered. And, uh, you can find any search you do on Desi's website right now, all the statements that Desi has been putting out related to performance, um, speak to the fact that they believe the, um, decline since 2019 has halted for the most part. So there are areas where we've seen, um, growth, but, um, we also, we still have some areas as a state where pockets of kids, um, are still, um, showing less growth than they were four years ago, if that makes sense. So this chart shows, the blue line is Abington in all of our students, three through eight plus high school for ELA, and three through eight, um, plus high school for math is the blue line. The dotted line is the state, uh, performance for the percent of students that met proficiency in all the years from 2018 to last year, 2023, skipping 2020, that's not on there. So you can see overall, in ELA, Abington on average is above, uh, the state average for proficiency through all of those years, and then in, in ELA. And in math, um, we were shadowing the state, and then, uh, our overall performance is a bit better than the state when we look at all of our students combined for last year. Any questions about that slide?
Can I do my soundbite?
Yes, please.
We always want to do better than the state doing as well, as the state is not good enough, but it's the, it's the one standard benchmark that we can use that is the great equalizer, and that's why we compare ourselves to the state. Because every municipal, yes, every district went through COVID, every district goes through the same challenges that we go through, and so that's what we use as our benchmark.
Thank you. And to add on to that and connect back to your previous conversation, it's important for the public especially to, to think about, um, state standardized testing is a snapshot of how students are doing on one day in one time of the year. What our teachers know about their, uh, students' everyday performance and formative assessments at the end of a unit or at the end of a series of lessons, that is much more, uh, rich information and much more useful for teachers for grouping students and to decide, what am I going to teach this student, this group of students, or the whole class next? That's what we really want to use assessment data for. So this data is coming from, the oldest from last year was probably March, is that when we start MCAS? Some grades? So some of this data that we're talking about tonight is from March of last year. It's instructive for us as far as looking at broad patterns and our curriculum, what kind of tweaks do we need to make, um, to, to make big improvements, uh, on a curricular level. But as far as individual students, our day-to-day formative assessment is much more informative. Not to say that this data doesn't matter, it absolutely does matter. But as far as individual students, what our teachers are working with, um, our kids on every day is much more useful and timely. So, um, here's a quick look at how students did, um, across the state last year. You can see, the change on this chart is showing, uh, in ELA, math and science, for the grades tested from 2019, um, the percent of students who were meeting or exceeding, uh, proficiency were standards, expectations, all the way through to this year, and so the first, uh, column of change on the right with the green number one shows that from 2022 to 2023, the state average in ELA for grades three through eight increased one point. But overall, from nineteen, uh, 2019 all the way to last year, we're still, as a state, behind ten points where we were in 2019. Did you follow that? That was a long-winded explanation. Okay. And so the same thing goes for high school, and we list it as high school because, um, we have ninth grade and tenth grade students, because it is a graduation requirement. We have some kids who do take, um, various, um, MCAS in tenth grade as well. So instead of saying ninth or tenth, we just say high school. Um, and again, this is at the state level. Education Secretary Pat, Patrick Toffwiler, or, yeah, I think that's how you say it. He, um, recently said pandemic loss is a national problem, but these results show signs of recovery thanks to the hard work of educators, students, and families, um, and our staff. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has indicated that the state average performance has stabilized, as I said a few minutes ago, um, as we continue to recover from the pandemic and interruptions at school, but also as we wrestle as a state and as a society, I would say, in our country with chronic absenteeism, which is what we'll look at next. So the state defines being chronically absent as missing at least ten percent of days enrolled. So you can read the rest of that. But this chart shows where, uh, Abington is, uh, from 2021 to 2023, it's the yellow line. And then the state, um, percent average, uh, average percent, um, for absent, chronically absent is paint line, which you can see, um, we made some progress in Abington, so we're actually in line with the state line. This is one of those charts where you don't want to be above the state, you want to be below the state. So attendance is something, uh, that is kind of always an issue in schools. Um, and we see a pattern in every district where, um, elementary, uh, attendance data tends to look better as kids get older, it becomes a little bit more of a concern, middle school and high school. Um, and so we're no different than any other district that way. And then obviously, uh, the pandemic, for those three and a half, four years, we were telling families to keep their kids home when they were sick. And, uh, so Peter just reminded me today that, that really, just a month and a half ago, is when we were back to telling people, we want your students in here, you know, unless you have a doctor's note, they need to be here. So.
So even, even last year, we wanted kids in, but if you remember, if you had the sniffles, it was state home.
Right.
So is this saying that twenty-two, for Abington, twenty-two percent of our students are chronically absent in 2023? Is that what that means?
Correct, yeah.
Do we know what, I'm just curious, what it was before, like, because obviously, twenty-twenty-one was a pandemic, so it was twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
What was it like in, like, eighteen or nineteen?
Right.
I'm just curious.
I can get that for you, I don't have that.
I can tell you our attendance data was pre-pandemic was pretty good.
Like, lower than twenty-two percent?
We were, our average daily present at the secondary level is about ninety-five, and at the elementary level, it was above that. On any given day now, if it was cold and flu season, it's going to be worse. You know, there, there are times in the year where it's, you know, better than others.
Yeah, I guess it'd be interesting, and I know that we.
That's the overall rate of attendance, I apologize, I don't know that number specifically.
Right, and we don't have data in terms of whether they're just not showing up or they're actually sick, right? So it's hard to know. Maybe it's great that twenty-two percent are chronically absent, because if they're really sick, we don't want them here, but yeah.
But I, I would be interested to see comparison data from, say, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen to now. And I do know from strategic plan that there are breakdowns of where the absentees are falling and everything, but I'm glad you're sharing this, because I, you hear about chronic absenteeism, and I very naively kept thinking, oh, but it's not us.
Yeah. I'm surprised by that number. Pretty hard. Yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions?
Do we have, I know you said elementary generally is better than high school, but, um, if we just look at high school, what does that twenty-two percent go up to? Because if I'm guessing, elementary is dragging it down to that, maybe like in the forties of chronic absenteeism, and.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't have the breakdown for chronic absenteeism by school. I don't know if either principal who's here with us.
Or even anecdotal.
Want to pitch in on it?
It is published annually in, uh, our accountability report, so you can be able to find the information there. That has not been publicly released for this current school year yet.
But probably still a matter of concern then, or, I mean, every absentee is a matter of concern, I'm sure.
That, I totally agree with that.
Okay.
And I guess probably middle school and post-secondary, I'd be curious to understand what percentage are excused absent due to a doctor's note or a college tour? And which are families going on vacation, or children decided they didn't want to come, or essentially drop out?
Or just didn't come, and their families are unaware of the fact that they chose to not come.
So you're looking for the numbers of chronic absenteeism pre-pandemic?
Yep.
I'm curious.
I guess the question I'm getting at, I think you guys are getting at, is what's, are we addressing the root cause of the most chronic absences? I guess that's where I'm going with this, so it'd be interesting to have that data and then look at.
And chronic absenteeism now, by school, by score.
Yeah.
Well, and Melanie, Melanie's asking a little bit about.
Excuse versus unexcused.
I understand there's going to be some excuse for absenteeism. I'm going to say, or excuse versus not, because, you know, not every family is going to be able to take, to pay the copay to take their child to the doctor or the clinic for that excuse, you know, so that will also.
Yes, and what definition are families thinking of about what excuse means?
For us.
Because when we look at, uh, the state laws, excused the first nine, first ten, parents get excused. It's more complicated.
Our current policy is that it's nine per year, that's in line with what other students were doing.
Yeah, because you're not getting on the doctor every time your kid sneezes, but you might.
But that's not high school.
It is now where at is when we start working out interventions or sanctions depending on circumstances. And to your question, to your point, after that number, if, if you still want it to be excused, you need a doctor's note. So there's lots of moving parts to it, but we can get more.
But let me say this, there isn't, there isn't somebody who's absent that the family doesn't know about.
Right.
It's not, um, we're, we're, you spend a good part of your day chasing families on getting kids to school.
Even if they're eighteen?
I'll let you answer that.
If the student, my senior is not eighteen and will not be this year, so you will always be calling me if she's not at school, but if a student is eighteen years old, do you still have to follow up with the family? Do the family still get a call? Good.
We'll get back to more information about absenteeism. But it is an important piece to the puzzle.
Yeah, no, definitely.
The last few years, right, as, because as my colleagues have reminded me, and I'm reminding you, you have to be in your seat to receive the instruction, to participate in the activities.
Dr. Vasta, can I ask you a quick question just before you get into the actual scores? Because I don't know if it, it, probably better to ask now than later. We talked about the opt-out for MCAS. Does the opt-out affect scores in that, is an opt-out like a zero? Or if you opt out, is it just like you're completely wiped out of the whole percentage calculation?
So there's not an official opt-out, a parent can write a letter requesting that their child not sit for the, or not take the, take the test.
So then what happens?
But officially, you're not allowed to opt out.
Okay.
So they're still counted in our participation numbers, our participation rate, which is part of our.
Overall score?
Over, overall, um, you just said the word now, accountability, thank you, accountability. So that's one thing that they report on every year for every district, what's your participation rate? The more people who request for their child not to sit for the test, your participa- participation rate goes down.
So would you, so like, let's, if you go to the next, flip to the next one, so let's just use grade three, fifty-two percent as an example. Is that fifty-two percent of the kids that actually took it, or is that fifty-two percent of grade three?
Fifty-two percent of the kids who actually took it.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
And while we're on the topic of what these scores all mean, am I recalling correctly that there was a difference in grading at a certain year, they changed the grading metric, what year was that?
So it's different for different grades.
Okay.
So we switch to the next generation MCAS in different subject areas, at different, in different grades, at different times. So generally, we can say, two thousand seventeen is when grades three to six shifted to the next generation, two thousand eighteen, seven and eight, and two thousand nineteen, nine and ten.
Hence why you put.
And science was the last.
Yeah, and last year, they also used that legacy scale to grade the test.
Last year, they blended the scales.
Okay, that's, I'm remembering your conversation from last year, okay.
But so yes, over, over time, things have changed.
Gotcha, so that's everything that we have in the twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three is comparable, with the exception of science, which is why science is blacked out for nineteen and twenty-one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The high school, yeah, our grade A. Science, science for the high school?
Yes.
Thank you. That was a good segue, Chris, into our actual data. So here you can see that compared to the state average, more Abington students in grades three through six met or exceeded expectations, that's what the, um, that's what the chart is showing. So the green bars, uh, are our students, blue is the state average, and the number fifty-two for third grade, for example, is a combination of all the students who, um, met expectations and the students who exceeded expectations. So for, um, these grades in ELA, um, we were above the state average, and you can see on the chart, uh, on the bottom, the point, percentage points we were above. Any questions of that? It's also important to remember, grade three is the first time kids take, um, an MCAS. And to what you were talking about earlier, not to be an extender, although I'm known to be that in meetings outside of school committee, what you were talking about earlier, there are, we don't want to teach to the, to the test. We are teaching to the standards, and the test is based on the standards. Whether it's a good test or not, that's another question. But, so we're teaching to the standards, but there is a component where we do need to do, um, the right thing for kids and make sure they are prepared for the format of the test.
Yes, yep, that's what I was getting at, too.
That's not how we ask questions typically in an English class, where, you know, it's multiple choice or drag and drop something on a computer.
Yeah.
So, um, we, we are teaching to the standards, and we do have to give kids time to play around with what the technology is like, what the questions look like.
That was more me remembering my, helping my third and fourth grader, her showing it to me, that's what was in my head when I made that statement. So I apologize if it came across.
No, no, no.
Wrong way to anybody, so.
Nope, it didn't, it didn't at all. I just wanted to clarify for everything.
For the third grade, would that be plus eight, just to give us a couple more points?
Yes, it would be, thank you for catching that.
Good thing it's not the math one.
So our strength in ELA, we provide intervention to all students. We have added, uh, systematic and explicit fonics instruction in upper elementary, uh, last year. Oh, no, this year, and last year, we added it in, uh, Beaverbrook. So all of our kindergarten to fourth grade students receive explicit systematic fonics instruction, which is going to build a strong foundation for, um, our students going to book. We've increased reading stamina for all of our students in the elementary schools up to grade five and six, also by giving them more time, um, to read and to talk about books. So we will, um, look into, uh, professional development for staff on continuing to look at using live data, not old data, to determine what are we going to do with our students to help them, uh, progress as readers and writers. Because it's not something that comes naturally, you don't necessarily learn that in your teacher prep courses on how to take data and turn that into, what am I actually going to do with students who are grouped by year? And then over the next year or so, we'll be looking at case six writing. We have to align our instructional vision case six for reading. And we have established in the spring, uh, we, I, I've talked with you about this before, we established an assessment committee for preschool to sixth, um, that has met twice this year already, and we have one more meeting on the books, um, to look at, um, to Julie and others who talked about, in lieu of MCAS, what else can we use to measure our students' progress and growth? So we are developing a comprehensive assessment plan that's. So we are developing a comprehensive assessment plan that says at each grade level, here are the benchmark assessments we're going to use two or three times a year to show growth in areas of need for our students. And some of those that we're looking at have state or national norms that we can compare our students to, similarly to MCAS, but it's a bigger pool. Any questions about that?
So you're looking at a formal benchmark program as opposed to in-house district created based on what we are teaching?
Correct, correct. And that doesn't preclude teachers from using teacher-made materials that they already used or that they've already created, but if we want to compare every first grader to a norm, we need them to have the same benchmark assessment. And we would use that to inform instruction, but also to determine interventions and supports that we need for students. So there'll be more information about that process as the community does its work, but it just kind of fits with this slide. Any other questions? In math for grades three through six, you can see grade three and four, we were above the state average. In grade six, we were even with the state average, and grade five, we were below the state average. Looking at, I have a slide for this. These students are students who were in second grade in 2019, 2020. So they've had a disrupted educational process, like every student in the state who's in fifth grade this year, last year, they're in sixth grade this year. So our, part of the work we're doing with the math committee, looking at our pedagogy in teaching from grade five to 12 math, but also our, aligning our programs with that pedagogy, goes a long way towards improving what we're doing for kids five through 12 in math. We, as I said before, we are still looking specifically at this data, doing item analysis, trying to look for trends and patterns, identify students who need specialized interventions. So fifth grade is obviously our concern, and we are working to figure out how we support those students.
So for those who are in fifth grade, how, what years have they taken the test?
So, let me skip ahead several slides. So they were in third grade in 2021, when there was a half administration of the MCAS, and there is no testing before grade three. So the first year they took it, they took half the assessment, and then grade four and grade five. So you can see here, they're blue and the state is orange.
So they're even and then went down?
Yeah, to me it's more the decline from, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're looking into. And don't forget, our, our model is where we have a transition fourth to fifth grade versus many districts where the transition is fifth to sixth grade. And so while we do say, well, the state also went through the pandemic, not every district that's in this state average has that same transition to account for. Any, anytime we look at elementary to middle school transitions, there's typically a dip in performance. Anybody who has a middle school age family member knows, things change a lot, and it's a lot to adjust to, the transition to a new school, to a new schedule. So those are some of the things that we're looking at, in addition to doing that item analysis to really dig into where we can help our kids.
But do we have a basic item, I mean, the item analysis is on each individual score? The state didn't provide anything particularly for that grade level to say this is where our biggest deficits are at this point in time?
We do have that.
We do, we have an item analysis of the aggregate versus the state aggregate.
Right.
And then deeper than that, we're now looking at subgroup aggregate versus state. Subgroup aggregate, subgroup aggregate and state aggregate.
So.
So we have, we do have that level of data that we're currently doing.
So even at that top level of data, we have a plan going forward, because regardless of whether or not we appreciate all this test it has to offer, clearly we're seeing that we need to send lifelong learners into the world, and there is, based on what the state is recommending, be learned, there is a gap in there. So is this a stop what we're doing and go back before we proceed forward on a precarious baseline of knowledge or?
Think for this group of students stands out among the four years as being the only group to perform below the state. You'll see that in grade seven, they feel to perform below the state average, so that group is getting that level of attention. But that doesn't necessarily apply across five through eight at the moment?
Right. No, I'm just more.
But it's also, I think, the second half of the answer to that question is, it is, it's more of an approach of getting down to the student analysis, the student level, and giving them the reteaching that they need versus thinking, or looking at overall the whole curriculum based on one grade.
Right.
Right? So, so yes, we're getting there. What intervention do they need outside of the classroom? What do the teachers need to do inside the classroom to help these kids in the areas where they were weaker than their peers?
Students that are identified, they have not scored as well as others, have already been invited to intervention programming that has already been done.
Daniel?
So over the past couple of years, this is atypical. We're normally seeing that fourth to fifth grade, there's not that much of a dip. It's usually either matching state level or a little above. So this is atypical. It's not a grade four to five thing. It's a this.
It's a this, but it is a four to five thing, because these kids, unlike the kids who came before them, were in the disrupted years, right? So that transition may have been much more challenging for these students than the students required for them.
I'd be interested, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm saying, but your, your point is that this doesn't happen every year.
Right.
This is pretty stark.
I was just gonna say, I have a student in this grade, and when they entered fifth grade, there, I think there was a big influx into Abington of students that were new to district in fifth grade, and I would obviously want someone to back up the numbers, because this was before I was on school committee and anecdotally complaining about something, I'm sure. I got the insight that there was a lot of people who registered late for school, and I'm wondering whether this was the timing of that test, of a whole bunch of students coming in from other districts that may have taught at different pieces or taught different subjects at different times, because math is, is so cumulative, you do geometry at a certain point in time. I wonder if this is a blip or if this is real. I'd love to know the number of students who took it in grade five last year that were new to district. Because I, maybe that has something to do with it.
At what time of year, I, a few years removed from the MCAS, when is the math MCAS given in fifth grade?
Early May.
Okay, so it's spring.
Hope we can get information.
Yep. We do get to see some of that data, right? Because I'm also curious to see if it is a skill-specific thing, or perhaps, we all know that some of it, you're talking about the manipulation of like the drag and drop and things like that, too. I've definitely heard stories of students struggling with that on a math side of things. It seems to come more naturally, you know, with the language arts side. I, yeah, I'm very.
Yeah, so we can, we can handle that however the committee would like. I can present more information as we do more item analysis and looking at the data, or I can invite you individually or in small groups or pairs to sit down and look at the data. I don't think I'd want to take a, a meeting to go deeper into this data, but we can handle that however the committee would like. So if we want to get that, your choice through Chris and Peter, he can let me know if I proceed with a deeper dive. Back. Okay, so math strengths, we have used ESER funds for the last two years, I think, to provide more intervention support for students in middle school specifically related to math. We have a committee currently looking at a new math program. You can see it in the recommendations below, but the Envision 2020 math that's in place K to, K to five right now is an updated version, so that is in alignment with the standards which is helpful. But again, the committee is working on aligning grades five through 12, or at least five through eight, so we'll have more information about how that's going later in the fall. And we already talked about the assessment committee. Any questions about this slide?
You mentioned our favorite, ESER grant.
Yes.
Do we have something, I feel like budgetary, we've talked about, Chris is warning me that it's coming in here.
That's my answer.
Yeah, so I think I know your question.
Yeah.
So over the last few years, we've been, and if you would like to interrupt me, boss.
Working towards.
First of all, good.
Over the last few years, we've been, as an administrative team, very careful in choosing what we were spending the ESER relief money on, so that we didn't get to a point where we had a major fiscal cliff when the money stopped. So we did not use it to create a bunch of new positions. We did create a few new positions, and last year, some of those positions were rolled into the budget. So there's an expectation, as Mr. Schaefer said, that he'll, he'll be presenting a budget to you soon. That may include the few remaining ESER positions that we have. They may be in the budget proposal after we go through the process of determining where our priorities are. We are at the end of the ESER funds. The deadline to spend ESER three funds is September of 2024. We have all of that allocated already. It's not all spent, but it's all allocated. And so we can give updates as we move forward with that, but you're correct. Budget season will no doubt include some of this that has previously been included with ESER. Questions? Yes?
Do we have the math on the percentage that did not pass? So I know we look at these metrics of meeting and exceeding.
Yeah.
But what about not passing, and how do we trend to save?
So I'll give you the opposite, and then you can do the math.
I can do that.
Because I have the opposite for you. So in grade three, our pass rate in math was 87%, and the state's average for passing was 80%. Grade four, 92% in math and 82% at the state level. I can give you ELA too, by the way. ELA in third grade was 88% for Abington, 84% for the state. Fourth grade, ELA was 89% for Abington, 82% for the state, and now I'm caught up. Did you get, you got that sorted?
What was the ELA pass rate in Abington for third grade?
88%. So then when we get to fifth grade, ELA 84% in Abington, 84% at the state level, and 84% in math, 87% at the state level. Sixth grade, ELA 83% in Abington, 76% at the state level, and math for sixth grade, 88% in Abington, 83% at the state level. So those are, it's very, it's much more complicated than what I'm about to say, but basically, those are the students who were meeting or exceeding and partially meeting expectations.
And that, if that were a graduation requirement, would be passing from a graduation requirement perspective?
Yeah, yeah. And then there are some students, when we get to the upper grades, where they're actually in the not-meeting expectations, but they're able to retake, and it gets a little bit more complicated, because we're also talking about subgroups of students. So, but that's the kind of big picture for grades three to six.
And I do have one more question, I'm sorry. As we look toward that group of students that are currently in grade six that are going to be entering a potentially accelerated math program in grade seven, have we thought about how a group of students who appear to be struggling in math, who knows if this data point is accurate, but how they would adapt to starting an accelerated course?
I will look to Ms. Doherty, who would be working with those teachers in grade seven. Is that an answer you want to give back to the committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Anything else? And then we get to science, where science is given in fifth grade, eighth grade, and also at the high school. Fifth grade was also below the state average by two points, 40% students meeting or exceeding, and 42% for the state. Any questions about science for grade five? Nope, okay. So this is where we transition to the secondary school portion of the presentation, so I will pass this to Ms. Corbett, who will talk about eighth grade and onward.
Good evening, my name's Nicole Corbett, so I'll present the MCAS eighth grade and ninth slash 10th grade data. Our eighth grade score has actually significantly improved from last year, which was very promising. So in 2022, only 35% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations. This has jumped to 48%, and we are seven points above the state average, so that has been a big improvement. Lot of work has gone to eighth grade, I'm very proud of our eighth grade teachers. We have a very hands-on, dedicated group at that school who has been phenomenal, both in working with labs, but also incorporating a lot of very, we'll say rigorous content into the classes. At the high school, so the cohort last year that we did have some concerns about, so that didn't score quite as well as anticipated, they were five points below the state average. What was a little bit promising about these scores here, though, is that, and I'll show this on the next slide, they actually did improve in terms of both meeting and exceeding expectations compared to their previous scores. So as I mentioned before, they are 35% back in eighth grade, were meeting and exceeding expectations. When they went to ninth grade in the MCAS, they were about 42% meeting and exceeding expectations, so there was improvement there. Yeah, that should actually say 2026, and I accidentally said 2027 because I looked at ninth grade, but there was a little bit of a difference, or actually a pretty significant difference, so we are happy with the growth there. So some of our strengths, we did incorporate.
So that's the current sophomore class?
This is the current sophomore, so it should say a six.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, in the current sophomore class, my son is in, and if I am remembering correctly, they have kind of consistently struggled all the way through.
Yes, that's why this is, we were concerned about this before.
Chris, if I can give a suggestion, maybe like that, this current sixth grade math, like having something like that for them, like just tracking as they go to see how it improves?
So one of our strengths, last year, given that we were a bit concerned about the MCAS scores with this class, we incorporated what we call biology boot camp. This was a day-long activity that happened the week before the MCAS tests. So it was straight through the school day, the students rotated between all the science teachers at the high school, and each science teacher incorporated one of the big concepts that was going to be on the test. So I taught cell bio, another teacher taught parts anatomy, another teacher taught genetics, and all the students rotated through and had 49-minute blocks where they just learned the content for that particular subject. We do believe this was effective in kind of creating a bit of a safety net to reinforce some of the concepts the students were learning through the year, but also to just help some, bump the scores up for some of those students as they got a last-minute reminder of some of the concepts they were learning during the school year. We have continued to incorporate. We have continued to incorporate a lot of hands-on activities, both at the middle and high school level. This includes using both physical lab technology and equipment and some virtual learning platforms. We do think this must have been effective in helping to model situations that we can't model in the classroom. We would like to continue that Biology Bootcamp next year. One idea we're floating around is potentially to restructure to two half-days. We do think there was a long haul to have the students in Biology all day, because by the end, they were getting a little bit antsy. But we think that maybe having two half-days and running this again right before the test would be effective. We continue to work on classroom engagement and building the use of lab and data analysis-based activities. The area the students struggled in this year, and was also the area that struggled with the MCAS in eighth grade, was genetics and a lot of critical thinking. So we are looking to incorporate, one, reinforce genetics. Genetics is a difficult concept for a lot of our students. So reinforcing genetics, once again, we do a lot of work with genetics. But also to reinforce critical thinking and experiment design, this especially before the state's looking to restructure the MCAS again in the future for science, where they wanted critical thinking, hands-on piece. This was a draft that was sent around. So this is a student area where our students currently perform the weakest, and we're trying to reinforce that in the classroom as well. We also want to have students work more with MCAS practice questions. We do a lot of work with this. There's online platforms that they're able to use, and they can get physical copies of test questions before, so they get used to the assessment style.
Just a comment, the Biology Bootcamp is fabulous, because before any big test, you would want your students studying and reviewing the material, and that's a pretty big test. And I love that all our teachers were giving a big, giant review session for our kids. I mean, that's great.
Big shout to Presley Mahana, who piloted the idea and then ran with it.
Did you have feedback from the students?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any feedback from the students?
A lot of students, a lot of the students actually liked it. I think they said it was a little bit of a long day by the end, but I think that a lot of students enjoyed going to the different teachers. It's a little bit of reinforcement in the subject, and I do, I do strongly believe it really helped, like I say, create that safety net for a couple that we were especially worried about. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Meg Gardi, and I'm going to talk a little bit about math. So our grade seven scores were four percent above the state, which last year, they were seven percent below the state. So that's pretty amazing. Our grade eight scores are one percent above the state. Last year, they were twelve percent below the state. So our middle school is doing some amazing things. And when you compare students to students, you're talking about last year's grade seven to this year's grade eight. They went from seven below to one percent above. So kudos to the work that is going on at the middle school. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. The high school was thirteen points below. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. One of the things about the middle school, like I said, they have done some amazing work. Their math intervention, math interventionist was a large part of this. To have the same person do pull-in and push-out has been great. For the students who received intervention, their scale scores went up by six points as compared to those who did not receive intervention, and their scores only went up two points. The work they've done with the building thinking classrooms has put more of the heavy lifting on the students, so they're doing thinking rather than being just shown how to do it recipe-style. And the grade seven and eight teachers have really enjoyed the challenge of creating thinking tasks that are tied to the curriculum and then slicing problems. In terms of our work for the recommendations, we continue to do the work that we began in 2019, in choosing and creating curriculum that focuses on the end of thinking, mathematical discourse, and perseverance in problem-solving. Our professional development support teachers in creating a problem-based classroom where math is essential to solve the problem, continue to work in identifying important gaps created during the pandemic, particularly where math is a sequential subject. That can be a little bit tricky. Incorporated more targeted, targeted math in scheme class in grade seven and eight. Do a deep dive for the MCAS questions and the data at the high school to create a, we're stealing their bootcamp, but a hot topic workshop for students to rotate through, but ours would be for targeted students and during bridge block, who are what we call our border scores, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And time dedicated to coaching and teacher-to-teacher observations to promote discourse and best practice in teaching and learning. So one of the things that we hope to do is we hope to go ahead and identify, well, we have identified students both in grade eleven who took the test and then went back to our current sophomores and took their grade eight test and found out that we had twenty-two percent in the scores from four ninety to four ninety-nine, and twenty percent in the scores from four ninety to four ninety-nine in both those grade levels. And we were surprised by the students who were southern eighth, and we need to look at that. So tomorrow, we have been given time, thank you very much for the professional development time, to sit down and do a deep dive into the data, and specifically, not just the data, but looking at the students who have the data. Oh, yes, so five hundred would be meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations is thirty points below that. But we decided just that, we just found that last ten percent, those last ten points, is really where we could pull our students up and get the best results. And that was truly from looking at those scores and saying, wait, that foundation had that score. So self-reflection.
Questions?
I more have a comment.
Yeah.
I guess more appreciation than anything. I remember sitting here last year, and we were all just looking at numbers going, well, that's not pretty. And I think you have come back to pretty much every meeting almost since then with data, with information, with ideas, with thoughts, and I just, thank you for taking the time, for motivating, for getting people together, for using the data that we do have. What we kind of sat here and discussed was never easy, but to see the growth that's coming, nothing's ever perfect. But to see that you were able to take where you were last year and roll it into something so much more successful and being thoughtful about it and helping more students do, just thank you.
I appreciate that, because honestly, if you hold back the mic from the tape from two years ago, you would have heard me say, they took a partial test, the gap was ten points, we'll fix it when we get to the high school. And that's on me, we didn't fix it. So that's my apologies. We had a transition of teachers, we're working on new curriculum, the focus became a little bit different. So now it's really time to get back and look at that and use that data moving forward to our class that we've all been a little concerned about, which is coming up this year in grade ten. So we're kind of using that data to refocus ourselves and say, how can we take that and apply it to our students who are taking tests? Amazing new staff, by the way.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
So my name is Liz Goncalves, and I'm the department head of English. I'm here to speak to you about grades seven, eight, and ten. As you can see, grade seven is seven points above the state in English Language Arts. Grade eight is scoring higher, accumulating more points, and they are still seven points above the state. And you can see that at the high school in grade ten, we do not have an MCAS at grade nine. They are six points below the state, but they are achieving a higher than grade seven and eight, if you can see the rate of their scale scores. Any questions about this?
Is it just a different format?
No, the format has been constant. If you take a look at a grade seven, eight, and ten test, you will see that two readings are introduced. It could be poetry, narrative, or nonfiction. They have a series of questions that go with a central idea, vocabulary, and then asking questions about style, structure, and key ideas, and then students write. What would show you that the test was different would be maybe the complexity of the reading or the authors that they were reading or the subject matter. But the tests from about grade three to grade ten look about the same in English Language Arts. So there's not really a change in the format of the test.
Dr. Goncalves, I was going to say, is there any, anything you may know, just looking from the state, right? That's a big jump from eighth grade to high school, just their percent. Like what, what happens, maybe it's in other groups, it catches the eye more because we're significantly ahead of the state, and then not, and nothing to do with us, but the state jumps up significantly in high school, I still don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can take a look to see what the state might account for, but they generally don't gloss the state scores in the same way. We can do an item analysis and take a look at some of the initiatives that the state is using. But I don't know why the state jumps from forty-four to fifty-eight. Sometimes it can be the incentive, as earlier mentioned, that there are students who are looking for scholarships to state schools, and maybe John and Abigail Adams, maybe that's a focus as well.
Thank you.
One thing that's important to know is that students have the initial opportunity to pass for graduation, and they have four more opportunities. So they have two opportunities in their junior year and two opportunities in their senior year. And although I just checked anecdotally with Ms. Doherty, I do not believe in the twenty-five years that we have given to MCAS, we have ever denied a diploma to any student because of MCAS scores. A student is far more likely to fail to earn sufficient credit to graduate and not be able to walk with their class than MCAS. Because they have multiple times to take, so all in all, a student has five bites of the apple, and the first one is, in English Language Arts, is March of their sophomore year. So you're looking at people who have not yet completed their sophomore year earning their competency graduation requirement.
Is that all the subjects, by the way? All of them get those pen and cracks out? No?
So math and English have the same five.
Yeah.
In terms of high school, the science has the original offering in June, a little different with science, but we do Biology, so Biology, the first attempt is June, and then they have three more retakes in February annually.
Okay.
Let's just keep it there. Other schools do physics and chemistry.
Okay.
We don't, but that is an option.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
How, how's our trend of passing students year over year? Is this grade that are now, I guess, the juniors, is this grade trending differently for passing scores than other grades?
So it's interesting, because I went back to 2021, and we had a ninety-two percent pass rate. In 2022, we had a ninety-nine percent pass rate. And right now, and this is where Dr. Bostas says it gets a little tricky. This year, when you take a look at the data, it says that we had thirteen percent of our students failed, which means eighty-seven percent pass rate. But in that category of not meeting expectations, there are students who have earned the right to graduate by meeting a certain scaled score. So they pass, they have a competency determination, but we follow students with an educational proficiency plan, and they are, all our students are enrolled in a full-year English program, in Integrated Reading Writing Program. So when I looked at the students who have failed to earn the competency graduation versus the students who did, we had ninety-five percent of the students earned that competency determination. And of the few students, there were two students who are absent for one or more parts of the test. When I looked at the students who did not meet expectations, they generally fell into the high needs group, which is comprised of low-income students, students with disabilities, and English language learners. And I did a deeper dive, and you'll see in my recommendation, the last one for students in all grades is to monitor attendance and progress of all students. If you're not there, there are some students who became successful in remote learning, not many, and it's possible for a student to make up work. But what's difficult is if you are home and you do not read, and you are home and you do not write, and very often, students decline to read or write outside of school on a regular basis, they lose those opportunities to practice. So when they're absent, coming back in and getting into bridge, making up a chapter or two, having composition work that piles up, some of that work doesn't even get made up by students who are chronically absent. So the most important investment I think we can do is make sure our students in the high-risk categories attend school. And I think we do that through our SST that meets, our team that meets regularly, weekly? Weekly, to look at students. And just in a discussion that we had today, looking at students who have failing grades and progress reports, and looking at, well, let's take the students in our high-risk subgroups first. We only had one student who was outside of those high-risk groups. So really, attendance in high-risk groups, academic performance in the classroom in the high-risk groups is probably the greatest investment that we can make in ensuring their success and meeting this requirement. But again, I'd like to say, and I guess this is the twenty-fifth anniversary of MCAS, this past, past year. We should have had a party or something. But the, that Abington has not, I know there's this great concern about the graduation requirement. We have been in hot water with maybe one or two students in twenty-five years. It is much more likely that our students who either failed or did not meet expectations were in the single digits. And when you only have a hundred and thirty students in a class, it's a small amount. So it is probably, not to neglect those students, we can intervene with those students in a more effective way because we know who they are coming up, and we find ways to have credit recovery. Most of our students pass on one retest, including our English Language Learners. We do so much to support students by having them take, students in high-risk groups, to take their MCAS here rather than in a classroom. For our English Language Learners, who might be shy about using the word-to-word dictionary, to which they're entitled, to take it in a separate place, so they're not the only students using a dictionary. So we do so much, including, it's essentially an on-time test. I know there was some concern that students rush through because computer tests tend to move faster. But as long as a student is working productively, they have a whole day. And once we get to noon time and lunch, they have a break, and then they can come into another environment where they are also supported and reassured that they can take time. The only problem is, is when a student does rush through a test, English teachers proctor English, math teachers proctor math, science teachers proctor science, I can't say. Chris, could you go back and answer those questions? John, I noticed you didn't fill in the essay. Could you go back and write that essay? I can't say that. All I can say when I receive this is, are you certain you've completed your test? And I can take their test. Would you like any additional time? No. And that's very hard, because if this were my classroom, I would be more explicit in my redirection to those students. But as proctors, we can interfere with that. We can offer so many other supports to students whose IEPs and English Language Learner status. Permit us to do that by changing environment and boosting students' confidence. But still, even then, we can't say those things to those students at that time. So our seventh graders, I framed my strengths more in terms of what students did exceptionally well. Seventh-grade students could tell you the main purpose of punctuation and paragraphing, why an author crafted or styled a particular sentence or paragraph in a particular way. They answered questions about diction, the purpose of a word, and the purpose of the use of figurative language exceptionally well. Our eighth-grade students made inferences about a character using information from a passage as support. And this is something that they would do both in a multiple choice question and in a writing question. In tenth grade, students could make inferences about author choices and character development and structure of a test. And that is something that if you were to replay the tape, I have come in and said, our students struggle most with what authors suggest. And one thing that I know about test construction is there might be one answer that's wrong. There's a good answer, there's a better answer, and there's a best answer. And sometimes students gravitate to the question that they read first, the answer that they read first and looks good. But I try to remind students that there's a good, a better, and best, and you'll see that in the stem of the question. And that's why reviewing what the format of the test is is so important. It says, choose the best answer, but the best is a superlative. That implies that there's a better answer and there's a good answer. So which of those three is really best is a hard thing to determine. Overall, students in all grades perform better on selective response items than essays. The answer is there. They can identify the answer with more success than they develop an essay. So our recommendations for students in all grades are to promote written So our recommendations for students in all grades are to promote written comparison and contrast of multiple genre texts on similar topics. And what that comes down to is they are going to be presented with two poems or two articles on robots and artificial intelligence. And they're going to have to say what authors do that's similar in different, how the facts are similar in different. So giving students one text in isolation only prepares them to read one. They're always going to be asked to read two and sometimes three. To focus on inferential reading comprehension, we're doing well, but Mr. Schaefer, as you said, we can always do better. And in discussion, talking about it and then in writing to say, what is suggested? Not what the actual answer is, but what's being suggested. And reasonable people can disagree, which always makes this kind of question about books and reading difficult. In writing, students need to, we need to require students to use multiple quotes to support a single topic sentence and to consider counter arguments. Very often, topic sentence, evidence, out. But very often, they need to have two or three pieces of evidence to more than adequately develop. And I think students are sometimes minimalists. Looks good, looks like a chunk, three sentences, let's get out. I always like to tell students that a paragraph is a series of sentences. You can win the World Series in four games, but it's rare. It's more likely to go to six or seven. So when you're thinking about the length of a sentence and the amount of detail, you can think baseball. Provide regular feedback on writing for revision and editing with targeted checklists. It's great to get feedback and it's great to have a rub record, but students need to apply that feedback and revise. And I do suggest that students do it for credit, full credit, because a grade should represent what you know and are able to do. And if your revision means you've mastered something, you should get credit for that. And that's the incentive. I've been offering revision for credit with my freshmen, sophomores and seniors, and they're willing to do it if they're going to get a bang for their buck. And the buck being their time. I also have learned a lot from my colleagues in the art department. I've been reading teaching methods for art teachers. Students don't usually take their sculpture home. They don't usually take their painting home. Why should they spend their English classes listening to teachers talk? They should be reading, they should be writing. And they should be doing it where we can see it and we can provide assistance. So if we're going to provide feedback, they're only going to read it if they can use it. And there was nothing worse to me than spending time writing comments or typing them out on canvas. When they were writing, it hurt more because when I see it in canvas, I don't know that they've read it. But when they just look at the grade and throw it in the recycling bin and they don't read the comments. And for me as a writer, the thing that gave me the identity as a writer was the conversation I had with my teachers in the margins and that I could go and talk about it and I could revise and edit my work. Students are using iXL as targeted intervention tool in both middle school and high school. And they're using that through special ed, through academic support. It's available as far as I know at this point, it has been free to us, but there is a desire to continue.
Not the avenue of public schools, but to our students.
To our students. Well, yes, so thank you.
Nothing, my father used to say, nothing's free.
No. And again, my other point about attendance. And I will say one thing, and for those people who are watching at home and for all of you, and I know some of your children. If you are going to run a 5K, you might get an app and you might go from couch to 5K. But if you don't read on a regular basis, showing up for this snapshot for two days in March is going to be as difficult as running a 5K tomorrow without that training. So we have encouraged our teachers named by the arts department to come into this beautiful library, to have book tastings, to pick out work for independent reading and to take ten minutes a day, twenty minutes twice a week, or a whole period to come in here and read. Reading is hard because it's solitary and you really can't do other things and read. And it's very hard to read in the company of your friends. It's harder to do it alone. So we need to build that strength, that solitude is a good thing and that quiet reading is a good thing. I want to say again, for the record, an audiobook is a real book. A graphic book is a real book. Reading is reading. And the more students that do it, the better lifelong learners they'll be and the better they'll do. Any additional questions?
I just want to say thank you. I can tell everyone has spent a lot of time going through all of the details that we get, and I think there's definitely some value that you guys have taken out of the tests and applied to the students and you're making some good progress. I know there are pockets of areas where we need to make some more, but there are some good stories to tell.
Chris, before you go, just on behalf of all, because I know it's a long day. I know you guys had a long day today. It's nine o'clock now. Appreciate you stick with it. Appreciate you sticking with stuff in the beginning. And so thank you so much for the time tonight.
Thank you.
I was also going to thank Meg, Liz and Nicole for all of their hard work, this hard committee supporting all of our teachers.
That was my way of saying that.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You too, Matt and John.
You ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So this is more informational. In your packet, I believe you have a copy of the brochure. That was given to all of our all staff about our November first professional development morning. There's no school for students. It is a morning of PD for staff from eight to eleven thirty. All staff who are certified are required to attend. Support staff may volunteer to attend. So it's open to support staff, but all certified staff must attend. So this year, we've taken a different approach to this PD morning. We've made it a choice based morning of professional development, based on feedback from teachers and staff over the years on where their needs are and their interests, but also based on research that's out there about how adults learn. So we're hoping that November first will be successful and that our our staff will feel like their needs have been met in some ways. Registration opened for this professional development day on October tenth and closed on October seventeenth. I do not have specifics with me about how many staff members registered for each program that's being offered. We have thirty in-house presenters and eleven external presenters. No one is being, none of the external presenters are being paid for their time. They donated their time to either provide one one hour workshop or three. So the the morning is divided into three one hour workshops. There were between fifteen and twenty options during each session, if that makes sense. And they're in those broad categories that are on the screen right now. And I think those are the big points, the big ideas. We also have, so the presenters who are not having public school employees are coming from some local colleges, coming from organizations that were members. For example, Massachusetts Partnership for Youth has provided some offerings, some other local organizations also. All staff had the option of submitting a proposal last spring to present a workshop and all of the people who offered to were included in the brochure. And I believe all of them are running except for a handful. So we hope it's going to be a great day for staff. The food services department will be providing optional continental breakfast from seven thirty to eight. We also will have the mom on the go truck, food truck out front at the end for staff to purchase their own lunch if they would like to. So we're hoping it's going to be a great day. Dr. Robbins will be presenting amongst many other folks here in Abington and happy to answer any questions you might.
What came, maybe you said in the beginning and I missed it in the transition, what made this become a thing, I guess, like what?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. So several districts in the area run a professional development day like this. It's been in discussion here in Abington for several years to put together a choice based event for staff. And that's what staff were looking for. You know, we have our district wide initiatives, we have building focuses, but it's nice when we can provide options for staff to choose what best meets their needs and their learning needs.
Yeah, no, that was more about, that wasn't in a negative connotation at all, just more curious as to what I'm posing. I would love, if you did, if you plan, I want to make, and this wouldn't maybe just descend us afterwards, if you plan on surveying the staff afterwards on what their thoughts were about it, after just maybe sharing, letting us know what
Yeah.
like feedback you get or whatever.
Yeah.
Because I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. We we do survey staff after every PD day.
Okay.
But I can definitely share some.
Okay.
So I can I can offer also though that Chris Basta is has a great work ethic, highly motivated and great organizational skills. That's what brought us together.
I can say that I've participated in a day like this too. And it is really nice in addition to being able to choose. Ours was more, I mean, I guess there was some content, but a lot of it was just people presenting what they do best and some of it was recreational as well, like going for a hike or a run at Water Tuck. And it was really nice. We are treated like professionals, but if you work for companies, a lot of times you'll get outings or you'll get time to bond. And I would say more than anything, that's what many of us took away from it was it was time to kind of, in a low key, low stress environment, hang out with your colleagues, learn some things and increase collegiality. So it's great.
I loved this. I went through, I, part of me wishes I were teaching again because that was already sort of like the ones I would totally go to if I could. So yeah, I'm very excited to hear what the feedback is too. I, it is half as good as it appears to be. This is going to be time really, really well spent for our teachers and just the scope of what's there. Clearly thought's been put into having something literally for everybody who wants to participate in a meaningful manner. So thank you.
That's great.
I have those thoughts. I think there's going to be, I would, I would think that there's going to be a lot of value in having two people in a room at a session that wouldn't otherwise be in the same room together because they're not either in the same school or in the same, you know, subject matter.
Right.
And I think that there's a lot that people can learn from one another and bring the full culture of the district, of course, to just your school or your subject. And I, you know, we'll see how year one goes, but I love the idea of working with other districts and maybe getting some of those those voices in as well, you know, if we partnered with, I think it was Rockland, I don't know. And and that was done together. Like I get the sense this is probably a ton of work to put together and I would love as many people to benefit from as it makes sense for those people to be in the room. So a lot of opportunity.
Yeah. Stoughton, for example, did ask about partnering with us, but it comes down to calendar, right? Because we all select our PD days, so it's not impossible, but as we, we'd have to do that around the same time. You have to decide to partner and develop the calendar, but it's not out of the question.
Thank you, Dr. Basta.
Thank you.
Your partners superintendent in schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So you have in your packet an overview and you've seen similar overviews. I want to ask, I'll answer any questions that people have, but I won't, I certainly won't waste your time reading this to you, of the search process for both the assistant superintendent of schools and the director of finance and operations. Just highlighting it is, I believe in the process, it'll be an inclusive group. There are the dates that are outlined. It'll include myself, Felicia James, for the assistant superintendent, search process, myself, Felicia James Robbins, and then a school community member. I'll ask.
I'll be there.
Okay, answered. And a principal, faculty, two faculty and staff members, remember the special education department curriculum, someone with curriculum leadership responsibility, and two parents that would be school council members, similarly mirroring that, the director of finance and operations, myself. This is a smaller group. This is someone who is is not as out there as the assistant superintendent.
Really as available to find?
No, I mean, and thank you for asking. They they do not work as collaboratively with different members of the community as the assistant superintendent does, so there's a there's a broader, a wider participation rate there.
Okay.
And a smaller group, the director of finance and operations, myself, Felicia James, a school community member and a principal.
I'll be the school community member.
And I hope to be able to bring someone to you at the January ninth meeting for each of these positions. These timelines are tentative. We want to get out as fast as possible to get the widest net out, to get as many applicants as possible.
To that end, we have an executive session when we're done.
Take over some of these. Yes.
Sorry?
Please post tomorrow.
Um, they.
No.
We've got November sixth.
One of them comes tomorrow.
And October twenty fifth. Yep.
Okay.
And and advertise, Robyn.
With Felicia not here, I'm going to defer the strategic planning review to yourself, Melanie and Heidi, so.
Okay.
What do you want to go about it?
Well, I want to respect our school community members who are participating and so if you want to start us, and I'll sort of team teach it with Chris, or if you want to end and do the things that we missed, whatever, whatever, your pleasure. Melanie and Heidi have helped.
You're pretty concise, so why don't you start? Because both of us are a little over both.
Got it. So I am going to do the following. I'm going to start by thanking some people because it's been a really, so I think what it's critical to remind people that this is the perfect time for us to do this. And it's been going so well with all of the different groups of people that we have. You don't want to do this during pandemic. We have a change in leadership coming. This is when you want to create goals and strategic plan for the system going forward that will keep us on alignment. So I'm not going to name the members of the administrative team because they are the administrative team, you know who they are, I want to thank them. But I want to thank our staff members. And again, this is a broadly represented group on purpose. Taryn Whitman, Christina Wilson, it was the pre, Pam Kalin, Andrea Doian, Rebecca Polkanen and Jennifer Warden. So what you see there is a representation, we have our ELE director, we have high school, we have middle school, we have special education, we have we have pre K with our staff. In the community, we have Christie Erickson, a Beaverbrook parent, Shawna Torpe, a Woodsdale parent, Cam Neely, a middle school parent, Pam Ferrone, a high school parent, Marcella Avalar Campos, a high school parent, Michelle Bisbo de Oliveira, a parent. Yeah, well, I said APS parent, so just go. Heidi Hernandez, school community member, and Melanie Whitney, school community member, and Alex Haggerty, a member of the board of selectmen. We've had a session on planning with the administrative team. We had envisioning the future session, synthesizing common vision and themes. We did a lot of work in our last session on data. We're going to be doing work tomorrow on root causes. We're going to be drafting strategic objectives and then bringing the plan, then a quality plan review and then bringing the plan to the committee later in the year. And did I leave anything for you, Chris?
You did.
Okay.
Briefly, the only thing that I could add is based on stakeholder feedback through surveys, through discussions, focus groups, conversations and the data analysis that the group has done. There are sort of five major themes that emerged that will do the root cause analysis that Peter was just talking about. root cause analysis that Peter was just talking about to start getting towards goals and objectives. But right now, these are just the broad themes that emerged. Facilities, teaching and learning, culture and inclusion, personnel, and communication. So those are the areas that tomorrow the group will look more deeply into.
Data-included survey.
Thursday. Thursday.
Sorry.
I want them tomorrow, Thursday.
Thank you.
I think one of the things, you know, Dr. Bostad just mentioned the five themes, and what was amazing is there were different groups that were made up of different people at different points in time over the last two days, and everyone really agreed on these themes. And even the underlying objectives, areas of improvement are similar between all of the different groups, which I think is indicative of, you know, a great representation from a lot of different people all coming together, knowing that we've got a couple key areas to focus on. And I think the strategic plan will really help us meld our each individual school council improvement plans to mirror what we want as a district and ease some of the transition building to building, both for staff and students, so.
Just having the opportunity to sit in a room with that many people who are all invested in our community, our schools, our students, our families, it's very telling. The feedback from the community was, it was kind of fascinating through all together. The discussions that are happening at the tables are focused, they're intelligent, they're congenial. It's amazing, even when discussing some pretty deep topics, people are really focusing on what's best for our families, what's best for our kids, and I feel like the process has been eye-opening, but also imbued with a sense of optimism, I would say, like, here are things that we can potentially accomplish. So I'm grateful that I've been allowed to sit at the table and have a lot of these discussions.
Well, thank you. Thank everybody you mentioned, and thank you, Melanie, Heidi, for volunteering your time, just so we, just, and with Julie volunteering for the safety committee, that is why, I think I told you guys, that's where I went and chose Danielle and I to handle that, so we all have something, and nobody's hopefully spread too.
No arguments here.
Yeah, so. And Melanie just happened to be going on Wednesday to the MESC, so that worked out. Is that it? Are we all set to move on, though? Thank you, guys, so much. Establishment next school committee meeting, Tuesday, November 28th, just after Thanksgiving at 7:00 PM here. Wednesday, November 1st, no school for students, half-day for professional development, as Dr. Bostad went over. Wednesday, November 8th, AEF board meeting at the Buckley Room at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Friday, November 10th, is Veterans Day observed. All school offices and buildings are closed. Some people still have to work. Wednesday, November 22nd, is a half-day for everybody, and Thursday, November 23rd and 24th, all school offices and buildings will be closed. And with that, as I mentioned a little bit ago, I'll be looking for a motion by roll call vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Finance and Operations. Holding this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, and we will not return to regular sessions. Am I yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you all very much, and have a great night.